Of course, this is required obligation to take care of trees on our property, which we do routinely, sometimes seeking professional help to accomplish that. But you know, this is more geared toward trees that are on private property or jointly shared property. And it should also note that many trees within the town limits of Dayton are in public utility right of ways or are within the right of ways of the Virginia Department of Transportation. So they deal with those. So this is really kind of restricted in some ways, but we do want to make sure that we protect the public as much as we can without creating a huge burden for town staff. Now, we don't have the equipment, manpower, or even the expertise necessarily to deal with all the tree problems that might arise, but we can certainly see professional help to accomplish that. So, you know, to the extent that we can utilize sound urban forestry practices, we certainly want to do that. Now, some of the criteria that we have for what we might want to entertain would be, you know, if the tree is a significant threat to public safety, if there is some sort of insect infestation or infectious disease associated with that particular plant, if it obstructs a public right of way, or if it poses a potential threat to either public or private property. So this policy is broad the scope will be applied fairly narrowly. And, you know, our hope is that we will have an item in next year's budget to provide a limited amount of Fleming so that we can deal with now problems as they arise and are of a fairly urgent nature.
Thank you for that detailed report. And there's been a tremendous amount of conversation about this. Council has talked about it, staff has talked about it, and it's one of those things that when you start doing items on a citizen's property, and that's why when he talked about it being a narrow scope, we've got to be careful of saying, we're going to do this, and then everybody across town says, you know what, I want that done too. And that's why we're talking about being shared property, talking about it being a health risk. But those are the limitations that we had to put on this. And for that very reason, because otherwise everybody says, I got a tree cut down, and anybody that has had a tree taken down any time recently, it is absorbently expensive. So there's been a lot of work from council and from staff on this, and I appreciate that. And we've looked at what the other municipalities do, and we did feel that it was important to offer that. And as things come to, you know, our attention, then we try to make the policy that we can to accommodate those. So thank you for that report. At this point, I'd like to have a motion to approve the tree removal and maintenance policy as written.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Dijecto. Have a second.
Second.
Oh, she beat you out. This was nice. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Yeah, I have it. Motion passes. Thank you once again. Second action item is the consideration, the rezoning on John Waylon Highway. Planning Commission has voted to recommend an approval. Our options tonight are to approve, deny, or table requests. Now, I wrote some things, some notes down here. Ever since I got on council, I have always said it is important, anytime that we look at any kind of development, that it's important to keep the look and feel of Dayton. For some people, development is a bad word, bad two words. It's not always that way. It's very important that when we develop, that we are looking at the use, the citizens, the impact area. When we redid our comprehensive plan this year, and when I say redid, I mean, we just basically scrapped our old one and rewrote a whole new one. There was an incredible amount of time, dialogue, and decisions made about what was going to be our development areas. We wanted to make sure that we protected the downtown, what was the look and feel of Dayton. Our development was going to be on the periphery, so not as to affect that. We have had not as many comments as what I expected when we get into a rezoning request. We have had citizens, we've had neighbors, we've had businesses in the area that have expressed concern to those. And I assure you that those concerns have been heard and have been discussed. And now it's the opportunity for council to discuss this this evening. Some of the concerns have been traffic, as we spoke about tonight. Other concerns, which is the biggest one that, you know, I have the issue with, and I've had those conversations, is it is the gateway to Dayton. You know, not too long ago, we had a solar farm on the other side of town that wanted to come in, and we were able to stop that. But the look and feel of Dayton isn't just a downtown area. It is as people approach the town and as people leave the town. So again, we have always thought about what we can do to keep the uniqueness and the quaint style that Dayton is intact. So as, as you said, B1 is wide open, and right now it's B1. There is an awful lot of things that could go in there that would have a tremendous impact on traffic. As far as the gateway, am I thrilled about having three store apartments coming into Dayton? And I've said this to developer, it would not be my first choice. But there are so many things that could come in that would be a distraction or a use that is allowed under that B1, but not what citizens nor council would want. So for this project, it is better than a whole lot of things that could be out there. At this point, I would like to have comments from other council members.
Which way to start?
But I am concerned as, as Dave said, you know, we leave it like it is right now. It's wide open. And they could put a. A tire burning business in there, and that's not what we want. So. That's, that's my.
Thanks, sir. You're not first now.
Well, this impacts the entrance to our farm specifically, as far as that turnaround. So I'm not too happy about the. Just in general, whether it would be this proposal or another. So I get that part. I kind of lean the other way. I'm willing to take the risk of a business being there. I feel economic development wise. It's economically better for Dayton. Economically. I'm not afraid of the sheets being there. I'm not afraid of the seven eleven being there. I'm not afraid of a restaurant being there. I consider the outskirts and it's still going to bring people to our town. I don't feel that those bigger businesses like that, to be honest, I don't fear them. Because I don't feel that they would think that's a prudent place to put their business, to be honest. I just truly don't. I could be proven wrong. Because I've been wrong a lot of times in my life. So, you know, I'm a little torn because, you know, I do know it, it's a little bit of give and take with the business in the front. And I actually don't mind the aesthetic. I'm not too pleased with it being three stories high. I just drove out past Bridgewater today to go out to, to escape to the training. And I pulled off into their new townhouses that are two stories high. And I think I would have had a better feeling about something those sizes, to be honest. So the three stories is, is hard for me to swallow too, because that's very more visible to me. As nice as they did look, I give that. So I mean, I am torn, but whatever is voted, I obviously support and will do the best to make it. Work the best for Dayton. But I can't say that I'm behind it for those reasons. And I lean to the side of I would take the chance of it being business. And I could be wrong, but economically, I just think it should stay business. But I will support whatever the council ends up voting for. I mean, even if we end up voting to table it, I mean. I don't know if we should table it, but that's up to everybody to decide because I think we've gotten as much information as we need. And we really, at this point, just have to root our thoughts, our beliefs, our hearts, our conscience. And then we just need to support it.
Mr. Dijack?
It's a tough one to follow. And I do appreciate, I know this is, as you could tell in the audience too, and for our students and our residents, thank you for coming out. I mean, this is actually a very critical decision here in Dayton, and you could see that we're, each of us are, you know, we're residents or your neighbors. Taking this into consideration because these types of projects just don't come to Dayton very often, you know, and these kind of requests. So that's why. It's incumbent upon us to really make sure all the decisions have been thoroughly vetted, all the options have been weighed. And part of that too, I know staff has done a great job of walking through that process and credit to Maggie in particular, who's stepped into this role here. And kind of helped us navigate this process. I think it's, you know, it's important to realize too that. What we're actually deciding, one is part of the, you know, is, is a gateway to town. Two is, you know, it's, you know, it's the future of the town. But three, it's also, we have to remind ourselves too, what the opportunity costs are and also what has not occurred and what could occur. And I think that's, that's a huge decision point too. And finally, I'll just note that, you know, right now, the, the status quo is actually. We retain it as business. The entire thing is business. And I would just note that I think in what, what, I think my colleagues on the planning commission discussed in detail. I mean, we didn't take that decision lightly. That recommendation for approval was after three different meetings. We've tabled the, you know, the case to get more information and actually, and. Credit to the developer for listening to the comments because the, you know, I think the planning commission challenged them to, you know, listen to some of the concerns and input. And come back to the table with a slightly more refined proposal. And you see that now, we now actually have proffers in place, the site. So now we have confidence. Again, if we were to vote to approve, we now have a concept plan that that actually runs with that property. And the only way they could change that is by coming back before council and playing commission again and hearing more comments from, from residents. So that gives some sort of assurance. It gives us a little bit more stability than just any development. And right now, that's what we could get is any commercial development. And I think the other factor too is when we've looked at the comprehensive plan update, you know, again, staff, council, owners, residents, everyone kind of. We put a lot of effort into that. And, and I think it's wise to reflect on doing some of that pre-planning to help us guide these type of critical decisions. So we don't have to just do this. Looking at, you know, in a silo. We have that to rely on. And again, the, the comp plan kind of dictates, you know, again, this. It is commercial. It's, you know, we're looking, we talked about increasing mixed use opportunities. We did talk about adding housing in Dayton in a managed way. And if we look at this, you know, again, you know, is it, is it perfect? No. But on the other hand, you know, where else do we have an opportunity to grow, get new residents that can help? Fuel our businesses, existing and future. And would it not be more prudent to look at the corridors, as I think some of you had mentioned, than looking at, you know, development right in town? I mean, that is one thing we heard from residents too, the, you know, the development on Mason Street, you know, which I would argue has, you know, probably more of an impact to town, in town. Residents, and you know, but that was already zoned. And that was, you know, we had to take, take what we had there. And I think if the, what the feedback we had was, gosh, we really just don't want that type of intensity there. While the corridors, we have the utilities, we have the infrastructure in place. And we also have the benefit of knowing that if. We have a game plan in place, if this were approved, the concept plan. But it also would require extensive review. You heard from staff and the developer too. This isn't the end game. They have to meet all these other requirements before they can put shovels in the ground. All the environmental testing, all the public works, utilities requirements, the V dot approval. If any one of those is not met, it doesn't get done. And I think that's the other thing too, is we don't have to wrestle with getting everything upfront. We have an opportunity to rely on the process, the codes, the ordinances, and the procedures in place. To refine and make sure that this application is done correctly. And so I think that's maybe just sort of where I think that was the kind of the, I think, the thought process that our colleagues on the planning commission kind of wrestled with. And again, it was, it's, it's a difficult decision. It really is. But I think when we look at the comp plan, it's showing that entire quarter, we all discussed and we heard from residents. That if we're to develop, it's the corridors that need to be the focus. And that kind of gives us the best of both worlds. But it also gives, not, not to pay, you know, any lip service to the, you know, to everyone who's come out. Today, because the other thing too, I know there's always the fear of what comes next. And okay, if this. Develop, this property gets developed, what's next? Well, in our comp plan, we have specifically said the surrounding farms are to remain agricultural. We're not to annex, we're not to extend, they are to be agricultural. And so it's, it's really just along the forty-two corridor in our comp plan. And if we stick to that. You know, that's, that's the blueprint. So it's not a, you know, open-ended question of what's, you know, what's, you know, are we just going to develop everything? And I would just note, we already contemplated that as being business. So to an extent, this really is. Being more in concert with the town than less. I think you have a mixed use, you have the potential for the, the business and the residential. And we, and let's be honest too, we have a housing shortage in the county, but also in the town. And, you know, while that wasn't the main focus of this discussion tonight, I think it's important to note too, we have a lot of people who want to live in Dayton that just can't. We don't, I mean, come on, we, you see the houses on the market here. They go like that. Everyone wants here. Let's, who can blame them? We all wanted to be here, you know, and he wants, and everyone wants to be in Dayton, in Bridgewater, TA district. And I think it's important to note too, though, we have residents that are either priced out or just don't have the supply. This gives an option for people to, you know, our, our school teachers or, you know, public safety, you know, our clerks or, yeah, everyone, you know, it has an opportunity. To get in on the ground level. And I think that wasn't necessarily discussed tonight, but I do see that as giving housing options that, quite frankly, I don't think would necessarily always be appropriate in other parts of town. But I think we owe it to look at giving that range of housing choices. So, you know, Dayton becomes a little bit more reflective of people who want to live here. So weighty decision, and I thank everyone's input and for, you know, coming out tonight too. And like I said, so for, for that, I just, I just encourage us to keep those. Items in perspective.
Anybody else have comments? All right. So at this point, I need a motion to either approve table or to deny this request.
Said we needed to do that in order for us to do the vote. Sorry.
Yes. So I do, I need a motion to either approve, to table, or to deny the request.
If you'd like, I can make a motion for at least to get discussion going. I mean, like I said, I've wrestled with this a good bit, but I think everyone knows, you know, again, having gone through the plant commission process or where I stand. And so I think for the. Reasons we've kind of outlined here, again, I make this as a weighty decision, I would. Make a finding that the application meets the zoning requirements under the town code. And meets our public utilities requirements is consistent with the comprehensive plan. By encouraging efficient and orderly land development patterns which integrate residential, commercial, industrial, and institution uses in the town. Also that it is consistent in that it ensures large-scale commercial development uses are integrated into surrounding neighborhoods. Being proximate to roadways and that the appropriateness of mixed use or planned development. Should include a mix of business and residential units by encouraging compatible design. So for those reasons, I would make the motion to approve the rezoning for the. Portion to town B1 and the rear to town R3.
So I have a motion on the table to approve the application. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Pennell. May roll call, please.
Or do we, any other discussion?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dijack?
Aye.
Ms. Pennell?
Aye.
Ms. Mathias?
Nay.
Mr. Walls?
Nay.
Mayor Jackson?
Aye. All right, so motion passes. Thank you and thank everybody for your comments this evening. And know that this decision has not been taken lightly. I mean, we have spent a lot of time, both staff, council. Conversations at home, I mean, conversation with citizens, it is not something that has been taken lightly. At this point, do we have anybody else that needs to sign up for public comments? I have two signed up right now. All right. So we'll start with Ms. Fenner.
Thanks. That sounds good. Well, so. So we're feeling a little more official. But we hope in the future that we are able to partner with the town in developing some pollinator gardens. With the town and with the citizens. That's just.
Thank you very much.
That's a lovely logo. Ms. Deb Crank, who has been absent for the last couple of meetings. We did.
Welcome back.
I'm Deb Crank. I live on three College Street, and I. Be person. And I remember what you said, and all I keep thinking is honey wagons, and whoever lives next to that property. Needs to understand what it means to be beside a farm, and it's a good thing. But I hope the developer takes that because I forget how close they're going to be to your sewage pit, but. I live in the town of Dayton, and whenever the other Mr. Cougar. I'm here to thank you all for your support of Dayton days. I will always thought Dayton days been around too long. And also it's D A Z because we're all in days. And thank you both. For taking it on. And Christine, you did survive. We really should get you a shirt that says you survived your first Dayton day. I filled out my survey and just like we spoke in the past. You can never satisfy twenty thousand visitors and whatever five hundred vendors. People are going to complain, it rained, like we can do anything about it, you know, blah, 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 whatever. But to hold an event in a small town like this is a, it is an accomplishment. Alright, so motion passes, thank you, and thank everybody for your comments this evening, and, and know that this decision has not been taken lightly, I mean, we, we have spent a lot of time. Uh, both staff, council, um, have, have conversations at home, I mean, conversation with citizens, i- is not something that has been taken lightly. At this point, um, do we have anybody else that needs to sign up for public comments? I have two signed up right now. Alright, so we'll start with Ms. Fenner.
Thank you very much.
Just gonna call you the pollinator lady. That sounds good.
Well, sure. Thanks. Thank you. My name is Dana Fender, I'm on Sunset Drive. And I am a member of a new group that's formed here in Dayton. Um, we now have an official name, our name is the B Friends of Dayton, and that's. B E E Friends of Dayton. Um, and on the sheet that I passed out to the council, has our mission statement. Um, and that's our official logo. So we're feeling a little more official. Um, but we hope in the future that we are able to partner with the town in developing some pollinator gardens. Um, with the town and with the citizens. That's just.
Thank you very much. That's a lovely logo. Ms. Deb Crank, who has been absent for the last couple of meetings. We did.
Welcome back.
I'm, I'm Deb Crank, I live on three, three Collie Street, and I. Be person. And I remember what you said, and all I keep thinking is honey wagons, and whoever lives next to that property. Needs to understand what it means to be beside a farm, and it's a good thing. But I hope the developer takes that, because I forget how close they're going to be to your sewage pit, but. I live in the town of Dayton, and whenever the other Mr. Cougar. I'm here to thank you all for your support of Dayton Days, I will always thought Dayton Days has been around too long. And also, it's D A Z, because we're all in days, and thank you both. For taking it on, and Christine, you did survive, we really should get you a shirt that says you survived your first Dayton Days. I filled out my survey, and just like we spoke in the past. You can never satisfy twenty thousand visitors and whatever five hundred vendors. People are going to complain, it rained, like we can do anything about it, you know, uh, blah, 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 whatever, but to hold an event in a small town like this is a, it is an accomplishment. The other thing I'm here to talk about, it's, it's tis the season, I know, I hate to even talk about it, because we just came off of Dayton Days, but here comes November. And, um. Lulu and I are still on plans to do the Dayton Giving Tree. Uh, we have plans to have the Thomas House Heritage Real Estate and Pit Stop to have trees, so we hope to have, we're going to have three trees this year. And then, uh, we'll be putting tags out soon and be getting out information, and I'll get that to you, Christine and Maggie, to put on the website. And then, of course. Over Thanksgiving, and I always call it Black Friday, I, I mean, that's such a negative, but that's how we all know it, you know, small town Christmas be happening, and then small business, so. Uh, appreciate all your support, the sidewalks look fabulous, please pass them along to Public Works, because that really was nice to, that's, that was one of my pet peeves for. Many years before any of you were probably on the, on the council, so thank you for getting that done. So have a good evening, and thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Ms. Crank. I have time for staff reports, if we start with Mr. Mathers. All done, thank you, sir.
I will be very brief, Mr. Mayor. But I too, I, I can't let this opportunity pass to, uh. Really just extend my greatest appreciation and just marvel at the work that was done. By staff, volunteers, and the community as a whole. In, uh, bringing up Dayton Days, it was a fabulous event. Very, very impressive, particularly for a community of that size. Great job. The playground equipment is installed, the sidewalk project was done in very good order, and the, the, uh, new water line on Mason Street is also completed, so. There's a lot more information in my report, but I will rest at this point.
I may or may not have gone down one of those slides on Saturday. I went under the tape, I wouldn't say I was the first one. I went home with, uh, rubber mulch in my shoes. Alright, so, uh, Chief Trout. Mr. Bowman.
You'll be happy to hear I have no report, I might have a report next month, though, depending on where the water tank purchase goes.
Let's hope you have a report next month. Mr. Dijak for Economic Community Development.
Um, I'll just echo all the comments that are said, I mean, hey, Dayton Days is our time to shine, and thank you for staff, and. Uh, and particularly Maggie for, uh, this, well, it's almost like it's on autopilot for you now, your third time around, and Christine for, uh, yes, uh, negotiating nu- number one, and Chief, just, it's like it's a well-oiled machine there, so I, I think. At least, at least it looks that way, I know, not in the. Not the heat there, but, uh, but anyway, we, I, it was, it was a great time, so all, all good in Dayton, um, I just know too, again, we've got our business spotlight series continuing, so thank you, Maggie, and, um. Oh, and also, I don't want to steal your thunder, but downtown revitalization grant, if I.
Uh, progress will resume on the downtown revitalization grant, we finally got the, thank you, we finally got the contract signed with DHCD, and we'll be having a kickoff meeting with, um, the, our, the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission, who is administering the grant this week, so. Look for announcements.
And I apologize, I delayed that sign in a week.
So, yes, thank you so much for that, that was, that was huge, and, uh, not coincidental, after you went on a tour with DHCD staff, correct?
Pure coincidence, yes.
So there you go, that, that's behind the scenes, there you go, but, uh, thank you for that, uh, and so, yeah, we'll be excited to hit the ground running and partnering with our businesses to, uh. Uh, really work on a planning and development, uh, opportunity with the, uh, uh, DHCD, I'm sorry, Department of Housing and Community Development, okay, there you go, I gotta get. Thank you.
You on the finance?
Why not? Didn't meet audits, uh, continuing to go through, and well, I, I know we'll be meeting again soon, is that correct, Mr. Mathers, to, I guess, yeah. For finance committee at least, yeah.
Yes, uh, things with the audit are proceeding, and, uh. I think that next month will, we will record up and. The rest of my knowledge, if things go smoothly.
Fantastic.
Well, let's see, then we finish the audit, we get right into budget. It, it never ends. Uh, Mr. Seward is not with us this evening, would you like to, uh, talk about infrastructure?
We didn't meet.
Alright, nor did the police committee meet, um, and, uh, would you like to talk about parks?
And there's not that much that happened.
What about the twenty-first?
You what?
What about the twenty-first? October twenty-first?
Bonfire.
Ribbon cutting?
Okay.
We're having a bonfire on October twenty-first.
And a ribbon cutting.
And we also have a ribbon cutting for the new playground.
Playground equipment. Mr. Walls, we're gonna have a ribbon cutting for the playground, the twenty-first, it's six o'clock, from six to eight.
So that's, that's all with the parks.
You know, a- as with the world post-COVID. We've received communication about two weeks ago that said. We have no idea, we don't have the playground equipment here, we have no idea when we're going to have it, we have no idea when you're going to get it. And two weeks later it shows up. That, that is the post-COVID world that we live in.
So it's, it's up, I drove by it, and it's good. I'll have to. Try to make sure my, my daughter, granddaughter gets over there.
Yes, I doubt.
Ms. Mathias.
The next mission would be to change the name to Purple Park. Uh, see, see, see.
We, we, we've talked about that. Alright, um. Uh, Ms. Mathias for personnel.
We have not had any, uh, meetings with Personnel Committee. Maybe it is. No, we have, we have not, we have not met since our last meeting.
We have not met since our last meeting.
Um, we're working hard as a whole council, you know, and hiring our manager, but that's not necessarily a committee thing. Um, you see that we're having multiple close, so just to be. You know, put out a later date, but no Personnel Committee.
Any other council comments? Well, I'll give a little extra, um, information on town manager, uh, we did do, um, an interview last week, we did more interviews yesterday. Um, we have narrowed the candidate pool, we will be having additional interviews next week. And by the end of next week, we certainly wish that we will have an offer made. Um, and as far as Dayton Days goes, and I, and I say this, you know, every year, it's, it, it is remarkable that. What the town of Dayton does with the size staff that we have, and when I talk to vendors, and they're like, oh my goodness gracious, how do you guys put on this gigantic festival? With, you know, this town this size, and then when I tell them the number of people that actually work on this, and, you know, plan it and pull it together. Um, they're really amazed, so thank you to both of you for, for getting all that taken care of this year, as, as we do every year. At this time, we have no unfinished business to discuss tonight. Do we have any new business to discuss tonight?
I want to make a motion to change the name Sunset Park.
Do I have a second for that motion?
I think it should be referred to the Earth Wild Parks, uh, and Beautification Committee.
Uh, they're here.
Six-month study period, yeah.
Do we have any discussion on that? Oh, actually, I'm still waiting on a second.
Can I do a second too?
No, you may not.
I haven't really do that yet. I like Sunset.
We do not have a second.
Get a memo out to them.
Can I have this question, tell me?
We, we, we can have discussion, we, I moved here in two thousand and five. The Purple Park was built shortly thereafter, when the park, the Sunset Park was there when I moved here, from the day I moved here, it has been the Purple Park. Everybody refers to it as a Purple Park, anybody that is not a, a citizen of Dayton that comes into town, they know that it's the Purple Park. I, I don't know anybody that I talk to that has children that doesn't call that park the Purple Park, I know in my house, it was always the Purple Park, all of our neighbors in the area, it was always the Purple Park.
Reason why it's Purple Park is because the playground equipment was purple.
But it's not purple now.
It is purple. The stipulation, the stipulation. Was, and we struggled finding the, a, equipment that was all purple, but that was the, right? That was the criteria that was given to staff, you cannot put playground equipment in there that's not purple. Yes, ma'am.
That was just called, it was called Sunset, technically, but.
It, it was, it was brand new, it was Sunset Park because it's on Sunset, and nobody had, you know, a, a better idea. Um, so, so that's why.
You see sunsets though, that's, I mean, it's on the west side of town, it's, it's appropriate.
I already stopped, one, one of the roads over there was Sunset Drive.
It is, it's on Sunset Drive, that's why it's Sunset Park.
I just figured it was named after the, the street.
No, that, it was, that, that's how it was, it was named after Sunset.
I'll try to describe something and say Sunset Park, you know, it's the purple, it's the purple. Maybe we need to have a, yeah, more discussion, or maybe it could be like this Sunset.
Alright, so, if, if we can, we'll, we'll take that back to the Parks and Rec Department, and we'll make a recommendation. There you go. Alright, I need a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting. Second, man, that's quick, oh, Mr. Dijak, I got it, all favors. Meeting adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Hour and fifteen minutes.
She, she, she's gonna sign yours, I'll sign her.